Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Bond. I'm the CEO of the Avalon Foundation and wanted to welcome everybody here and yeah, yeah, this function is something that we've done a few times now. We did it with the county council, then with the mayoral race, and I guess we're in the town hall business now. But we felt like, from the Avalon's perspective, civic engagement is part of a strong community, and we are an organization that is all about building a stronger community. So, we are not a partisan organization. We have great respect for everybody here who's giving, giving of themselves to our town. I want to thank all the candidates for participating in tonight's event. Please, if you are in the audience, these are people who are really giving of themselves and they are deserving of our respect. I want everybody to be kind and cordial, all around. And again, I want to thank the Talbot Spy and Dave for being such a great partner in putting this event together. And especially, I want to thank Craig for agreeing once again to moderate for us. He's done a fantastic job, and I'm looking forward to being a citizen and sitting down with the rest of you for the rest of the evening. Craig, if you want to take it away, thank you again.
Thank you, Al. Thanks so much. Thank you for the Avalon. And to the Talbot Spy, where if you just don't get enough of this tonight, you can watch it again tomorrow when the Spy comes out. Well, it's kind of exciting. We're two weeks away from an election. Seems like some of us were up here not too long ago. I think we were actually, matter of fact. But this is an important one, and the role of the president of the Town Council in Easton is, is an important role. We're going to take some time tonight to let each of the candidates talk about how they perceive that, how they think about handling that job. But first, to open this up, we're going to go down the line, starting with Bob Willie. We're going to go down the line and give each of them a couple of minutes to just make comments about why they're seeking this race and tell us a little bit about themselves. Former Mayor Bob Willie.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I've been in Easton all of my life, in and around Talbot County. Betsy and I have been married, Saturday at 2:00 will be 62 years. I've put up with a lot. But seriously, I don't get in anything for the short term, hence the time that I've spent now on the Town Council and in the mayor's office. I have 60 years in with the Easton Fire Department, 58 years with the Easton Ilks Club. And it's been one thing after another. You can ask Betsy, and she's probably counted the time. But seriously, we've had three children. We've raised three. The oldest boy passed away a few years ago, but the other two have graduated from college. They have businesses of their own, and they're doing very well. In fact, they all have a flock of grandchildren, and we now have two Greek grandchildren. Been a member of just about every organization on the Eastern Shore that has to do with the Maryland Municipal League, and a member of the Maryland Municipal League Hall of Fame as of 2009, I believe it was. So, looking forward to the upcoming election. I think probably I'm the only candidate that has experience as a Town Council President. I was there for six years. Also feel like I'm the only one of the group that's had experience managing a workforce of 150-plus people, and also budgets of over $22 million. And also did that with Waverly Press years and years and years ago. So, again, looking forward to continuing. I think there's a lot of things Easton has going for it, and I'd like to be part of keeping those things moving and getting them a little bit better and a few more bells and whistles. Thank you.
Bob, thank you very much. Al, you know a lot about this role too, because you've been on the council. But go ahead and share your opening thoughts.
Well, thank you. I had the privilege 23 years ago to get hired by the Talbot County Chamber of Commerce as their president and CEO. Organization that had over 800 business members representing big and small businesses, people of all backgrounds, colors, ethnicities, and gender. And it gave me a great opportunity for, to work for 20 years for them, to get to know this community, to work with all of the organizations in this community that provide human services, as well as other services that make this a great community. In addition, I've had eight years on the Town Council. I've had the opportunity to learn the ebb and the flow of what happens on the council. And I also recognize the difference between what the mayor's responsibility is and the president of the council. I was lucky enough to be able to be on the council when John Ford was the president. And very honestly, I, I thought that I learned a lot from him, how to treat people, how to make sure that the agendas were taken care of, how each council member was able to get their voice heard, and how we were able to be civil and keep meetings moving forward. I think all of these things add up to an opportunity now for me. It's a 20-month service. That's all we have left on this term. But I think it's 20 months of being able to move Easton in the right direction. I think we've gone a long way under Mayor Willie in the past, but it's time to move forward with new ideas and new challenges. So, I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you, Al. Frank Gonzalez, you were a candidate for the Town Council, so you've given a lot of thought to this. Share with us your opening statement.
Certainly. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I did run for Ward 1, and with the overwhelming support that I've experienced, I decided to capitalize on that momentum and continue to push for this position. I am here to focus on smart growth, attainable housing, better health care, and fair representation for all citizens of Easton. And I have been involved in many volunteer organizations, which I hope to expand on later. But I look very much forward to being involved with the town and making sure that someone is working with the mayor, and that I hope to bring the town to achieve our vision and goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Kevin Bateman, when he walked in, I said, you know, this is really an evening about you guys, and you get a chance to share your thoughts with the audience. And he said to me, actually, it's an evening about the people of Easton, which I thought was terrific. Kevin is doing this, I think, for the first time, but we welcome you, and we invite you to make some comments as an opening statement.
Hi, I'm Kevin Bateman. My wife and I moved here from Annapolis about 16 years ago. That is my wife of 30 years. She's sitting over there. I told her if I was going to do this, she had to come along. As Craig indicated, this is my first experience coming out to serve more than I have. In the 16 years we've been here, I've been a part of Historic Easton Incorporated, been on their board for about nine or 10 years. And I've also served at the pleasure of the former mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Willie, for allowing me to be a part of the town on the Historic District Commission, where I'm still serving. And I've been doing that for about eight years. In the time that we've been here, I've seen a lot of different things going on within the town. There are some things that I think the town could do better, as we all probably do, and a little bit faster than what they may have done. I'm a person that believes that everyone matters. No matter who you are, no matter where you come from, no matter what your religion is, what your ethnicity is, we all matter. We're human beings first. And keeping that in mind, that is why I've taken on this adventure, to try to make sure that every person in this town matters.
Thank you very much. Well said, and I've always thought running for office is a very noble task, so you all are great to be doing this. Al, let me start with you on a question that I've had on my mind, and that is, you know, what is the role of the president of the Town Council? And you've, you've served on the council. You've had, you've watched, obviously, a president perform, but how do you, how do you think about this role, and then also, why, why are you seeking it?
Well, I think the role of Town Council is, president is to be somebody who works with the mayor's office and the staff, but also works with the council members, helps to set the agenda, helps negotiate important information, and, you know, only the council gets to vote. So, there's only five votes. The mayor can veto, but the council really disposes of legislation. It introduces legislation. It either passes or rejects it. The council also is responsible for the budget. They interview each of the department heads. They ask hard questions, and their agenda is set during the budget. And so, they need to make sure that when the budget is passed and moved on to the mayor's office, that those agenda items are taken care of. And so, I think it's, it's a critical position, and it takes a lot of working back and forth with other members on the council. We have to be very careful. We can't meet more than two at a time, or we cause ourselves to be, excuse me, we cause ourselves to be in violation of state law. So, it's, it's critical. We understand that. We also need to help set the agenda legislatively on transportation, on housing, and on development issues.
Yeah, Bob, I want to ask you next about this, because you've, you've had your hands on the levers, let's say, as mayor. You know, you did oversee the budget. You did have a lot of people reporting to you. But it's a different role as president. And you, how do you see that working? How would you approach the job if you were to be elected president of the council?
I think one thing that Al didn't mention is that the president of the council fills in for the mayor in case of absence of vacation or illness of something of that nature. But, and while I was talking, I forgot your question.
No, I just, just, your, I guess what I'm interested in is to have you describe the role of the president versus the role you had as mayor, and how you would look at that differently.
Well, the mayor does have a different role, primarily because he's not a voter, or she's not a voter. The discussion is between the council members, and they in turn vote and pass on the information. If the, if the mayor doesn't particularly care for what's been sent to him, he has the veto power. I think I'm the only one that's vetoed anything in the last 40 years from the mayor's office. And I still catch a little grief from that. But, you know, at some point, it's going to die out, and we'll get on with life. But that, that's, the big problem is, is that you, you get your information together, you listen to what's been said, you form an opinion, you send that to the council with your ideas and what should happen, and then it's up to them. If they approve it, great, we're off and go, and running. If they disapprove of it, then we've got some more talking to do.
You know, Kevin, you opened by talking about how everybody counts, and you want to hear from everybody. Well, that, that's probably a pretty good description of the role of president of the council. You've got four colleagues on the council and a mayor to contend with. How would you approach that task?
Well, I would probably utilize some of my skills from my Army days, leadership skills. We were always taught that a good leader is a good listener. You learn from the people you work with. You don't always have the best idea. There's other people out there a lot smarter than you are, and you need to open your ears and focus on what they're really telling you. And maybe then, everybody can come together and formulate the best plan possible for whatever the situation is.
Frank, you raised some issues, and we'll talk about the issues. But I wondered whether you saw the role perhaps as one of, as president of driving those issues forward on the council. And I just, I just wondered if you could address that. Would you see this as an opportunity to push forward on certain issues that you're passionate about, or is it a kind of a convening function of some sort?
Well, both. I would say that this position, so the mayor is the visionary for the town. And I like to equate the mayor to the COO of a company, and the council president to the CEO of a company. The mayor oversees operations, and the CEO helps provide direction. I, as someone in this position who would be setting the agenda, this is an extremely powerful position in the town, because you get to decide what is brought forth for votes. And that is extremely important. So, someone who is either with or against the mayor has an extremely powerful say as to if that mayor's vision is accomplished or not. And I believe that by, as I mentioned in my Talbot Spy interview, and as Kevin has just echoed, that listening is the best skill that a leader can have. Because I'm a firm believer that I have two ears for a reason, and it's to listen, and it's to hear all sides of every story and every issue to make sure that that information is digested, it's absorbed, and it's translated into an actionable, objective decision. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Al, you, you very constructively confront issues, I think, and forced to have them addressed, as I perceived it. The president of the town, of the council could, could drive issues and confront issues with the mayor, or could collaborate. It's kind of a spectrum. And I just, I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about your thinking on kind of where you would be on that spectrum as president?
Sure. Well, one of the things that I think is critical is the sharing of information. And the more information that's shared between the mayor's office and the council, the better council is able to make informed decisions. And, and personally, I've been frustrated over the course of the last couple of years. I think we need better information. You know, it's always good to listen to people, and I agree. But the other question is, what didn't you tell me? What are you holding back? And get, making sure that you get good information, and that you take that information and you move forward with it in a timely fashion.
The, let's go to some of the issues. The comment, I think Frank mentioned it, of favoring smart growth. There's no, there's no doubt that this community is asking itself on a fairly regular basis, you know, what direction do we want to be going in? Are we for some growth, for no growth, for smart growth, for infill growth? And maybe I'll, Bob, let me start with you, because you've been addressing this for some time. Is this a community that, you know, three or four years from now is going to look a lot different, or do you think it's going to look pretty much as it is? And what would you like to see happen?
I think you hit it right on the head. When I was in high school, many, many, many years ago, Easton was about 5,500, 6,000 people. So, it's grown a little bit. When I was in high school, you used to know everybody in your school class. When my kids were in school, they were lucky to know two or three. They might know a few more by the time they got out, but it just didn't happen. But I, I think we, we tend to soft pedal affordable housing. We think if we go ahead and build 100 houses, we're going to solve the problem. We aren't. That problem's been around for years. It's going to be around for years to come. I think that we were talking the other day, there's about 1,100 homes in review process for the town of Easton. If you figure two and a half people for a house, that's somewhere around 22, 25, 2600 people, not including the cars, not including the children that people already here have, and so forth. So, I think we, we need to look at the Talbot County Housing Commission for one thing. It doesn't have representation from all of the county municipalities. It has Easton and St. Michael's. It needs to have Oxford and Trap. We need to have to go after this all at one time. Easton is not, not the, the one to solve the affordable housing issue. We'll do our part, but we don't do it all. And the others have got to chime in. And to have 1,000 homes or 1,100 homes in review, you don't know whether these are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, one-bath, two-baths, whether they're individual homes, whether they're townhouses. You need to know all that information and have some idea of what's going on. And once you do that, and, and once you have what you're going to need to get started, then you need to get going. You, you need to get into action, get some of this stuff done.
Thanks. Frank, I, when I listened to the, your, your interview on the Spy, you spoke about, and I've heard that you spent a good deal of time over on the east side of 50. And learning about what folks over there are thinking and how to, I think, I think what you heard was they want to be, feel more included. But maybe you could share some of that in terms of how you see the development of the town going forward, and what we're going to do with bringing those people into the center of the community.
Certainly. So, so with many of the individuals that I've spoken with over the past few weeks, I hear repeatedly the desire for more amenities on their side of 50 that are within walking distance, easier access to downtown, crossing 50. There aren't too many options for safely crossing. I, I know that there is a pedestrian footbridge in the works, and that is a great first step. So, finding ways to make bikeability and walkability attainable for people that live across the bridge, or 50, who want to get downtown and not have to drive their car and worry about parking or traffic, are ways that we should definitely be looking to incorporate them into the fabric of our town. And I, I would like to also go back and, and address Mr. Willie's statement regarding the budget. He, he is not the only person who's ever managed a large budget. I, I do have experience managing departments that have budgeted, have been budgeted for, for, for multimillion dollars annually. Additionally, I had my own revenue stream of multimillion dollars that I was expected to be responsible for, in addition to ensuring that the millions of dollars that the team I'm managing is responsible for is appropriately accounted for. So, please know that, that is not entirely the case, and that I do also have experience working with seven- or eight-figure budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, the, you know, this question about what we want the community to look at going forward, I kind of want to return to that and have you talk a little bit about that. I'm, I'm not sure in what area of the town you're in, but how would you like to see it grow, kind of, as we go forward? You might move that mic a little closer to you.
Yeah. My wife and I, we have a home in a historic district up on Goldsboro.
There we go.
My wife and I have a house here in town, in a historic district on Goldsboro Street. As I said, we've been here 16 years. When we came here, we were looking for just the right house that fit us, the right size. We didn't want it too big. We couldn't want it too small, because we had a wonderful golden retriever that we wanted to have room for, and now we have two. 11-month-old boy, he's. But what we've seen in those years is that people are coming to this town looking for affordable properties. In, in the historic district, there, there are some. And there, when I say there's some, they're projects. And you have to be ready to take on the project. Like, across the street, our neighbor, one of our newest neighbors came here, Dudley and Marion, and they purchased a house that had a lot of projects, a lot of structural issues. And they took it on freely, because they love the town, that they fell in love with the town like we did, the area, and they thought that house could be what it currently is today. And it should be in a magazine. But there's still a, a lot of need for, for housing, not just in regular areas of the town, but in historic district. We don't have that many areas to build new. We have some green spaces, like at Augustin Park, that, that have room for some sort of housing there. Hopefully, that would be something that would be affordable, if at all possible. As Mayor and Al both have already said, we need affordable housing. It, it's a tough challenge to find the location that fits, that has the right space and the right mix. We, we want to grow. We want to see responsible, common sense growth. And that's going to take a lot of thought and a lot of planning.
Fair enough. Al, I want to come, have you talk about this, but I know you spend a good deal of time going to some of the commission meetings and other meetings around in the city. And this comprehensive plan is, is, has been described as kind of a blueprint for going forward. And so, I wonder if you could talk about your thoughts about what the town might or should look like going forward, but also incorporate just where we're headed with the comprehensive plan.
Well, I've been going to comprehensive plan meetings, as you know. It used to be a six-year project. Now, it's, they pushed it out to 10 years. What's interesting, when you go to the comprehensive plan meetings, is you look at the median age of the people who show up. And they look like a lot of us in the audience.
[laughter]
Yeah, who came here and said, okay, let's close the door. And, and that's fine. But we're not really getting out and touching those families that are out there, whose kids are coming home, going to sports. And I know an effort is being made by our planning staff to do that. And I think it's critical that we, we get out there and, and we get a broader view from the community. As I've said, in, when I ran for mayor, what do I envision? I envision keeping the 1% growth goal. I know we didn't meet it, but then again, between 2000 and 2008, we had a recession. And if many of you remember, we had a lot of foreclosures in this community. And it was very tough on people. So, that kind of held that growth down. Where would I like to see us in 10 years? We're 17,001 right now by the last census, at least under 20. I think we have to plan for some growth, but we have to be smart about it. And I think Poplar Hill is a great example of the people standing up and saying, no, what you're offering us is not acceptable, and we need a better alternative. And so, now they've come back with a different alternative, probably 300 less units, protection of the critical area. I think that's important. But I want to go back to 2000, when my wife Karen and I moved here. We got outbid for six homes, coming from Kansas. We had a little sticker shock. We ended up buying one of Hank Corbin's super homes. That's on the other side of Dutchman's Lane. And, you know, when they built those homes, when Hank built those, there weren't sidewalks. There weren't a lot of amenities, but people bought them for $50,000 or $75,000. They now sell for $319,000 and $330,000, because people have fixed them up. They put new internal systems in, heat, windows, garages, whatever. And, and they're the folks who now are looking for the next step up. And the 200 homes on Matthews Town that was approved by the council is that step-up home, and which then gives other people an entry to get in. If we're really talking about workforce housing, and that's a critical issue, we need to, as a, as a town, buy some land and say, this is going to be our workforce housing area, and we're going to work with Habitat for Humanity or other organizations. And we're going to put a planned workforce housing project together, and it's going to be a nice neighborhood. But remember, every time we want garages in the back, we want alleys, we want, you know, all of these other things, it raises the cost of housing. And Habitat, right now, it costs them about $300,000 to put a house into our community. And so, when we talk about what's affordable, it's what's affordable- our community. And so, when we talk about what's affordable, it's what's affordable for who? Apartments are an important part of this equation, because millennials that we're trying to attract don't wanna buy a house. They want to get a place, they wanna get in and then see if this is where they wanna be. And they don't wanna be burdened with a house. And now with interest rates at seven percent, it's becoming more and more difficult for those individuals to be able to afford a house. So we need to look at all of those factors. Uh, you know, our Affordable Housing Board, I think somebody had written in today, uh, was started in two thousand and five. And I think that some of the projects we do to help people fix up their homes are great, but we've only built one house since two thousand and five, and it's now twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'm getting ahead of myself. Uh, but, you know, what I'm saying is, we really need to be strategic in our planning and, and develop partnerships to be able to take those plans to fruition.
I, I wanna, I wanna stay with you for a minute, because Bob mentioned something that I've also heard you talk about, and that's kind of collaboration with the other towns. And is that something the president of the town, this town council can do with, you know, the other towns in the area, St. Michael's and Oxford and?
Well, I think it's, we meet with the county, the towns meet with the county council quarterly, and that's a real great opportunity to, to work together on mutual, projects of mutual interest. But I think cross-pollination of the councils and the leadership is critical. And, you know, uh, the mayor has talked about the Talbot Housing Authority. Uh, I look at Oxford, I don't know how many more houses you can put in Oxford, very frankly. Uh, St. Michael's, uh, is doing some things down there, and that's with the Talbot Housing Authority. Uh, the Talbot Housing Authority is trying to get Dover Brook Project rebuilt. And the town, uh, for, uh, when I was on the council, I recommended we take a million dollars of our ARPA money, which was appropriate for that project, to help them get a head start. Uh, we only did two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was disappointing to me. The people who live in that community are people who are struggling, and their, uh, project there, their housing there is a subsidized housing project. And that's the other thing. We need to look at what level of housing are we talking about? Is it Section Eight? Is it subsidized? Is it rent, you know, uh, subsidized? There's a number of different programs, and we need to be working with the folks who can help us with those programs.
Good. You know, sure, Bob?
Uh, just to add on, uh, we constantly get told that, that Easton's not big enough for some of the conference meetings. Uh, Maryland Municipal League has several a year, and we've tried to get the, uh, some of those meetings here. The Tidewater happens to be our largest single hotel, which is fine, but, uh, can we not use Easton, St. Michael's, Oxford, Trapp, to go together to put a bid in on one of these meetings? Because certainly the ladies during the day, if they don't wanna go to the meetings, they can visit some of the historic homes, they could take a boat ride on the, on the rivers, they, there's a lot of things they can do. But to me, it's important that we talk to the other towns, and we've been talking with St. Mi-, uh, Cambridge pretty regularly here in the last couple of months. But there's definitely some possibilities of things that we can do, that we can, uh, join forces with Cambridge and do. When I was in high school, the biggest rivalry on the shore was Easton and Cambridge. If we went to Cambridge and won, you had to fight your way back to Easton, and vice versa if they came to Easton. But Salisbury gradually got into it, and Indianapolis and some of the others. But there is a possibility that we can work with the other towns and get something going that everybody can enjoy and everybody would take advantage of.
Thanks. I wanna, I wanna talk a, a little bit about healthcare, because that's certainly on everyone's mind around. Frank, I heard you talking about the need for doctors and the challenge, probably many of us could relate to, of, of keeping that family physician or finding that family physician. And maybe you could kick it off, this discussion of healthcare off with some of your thoughts on that subject?
Well, I'd like to start off by saying that, yes, we, we do need a new hospital. Um, and it is, in my opinion, long overdue. Uh, the same schematics have been put forth for this go-around as was five years ago, and it's now two hundred million dollars more expensive. So if we drop the ball again as a town, then with the University of Maryland, uh, system, then if you use that same rate of growth, we're looking at an eight hundred and sixty-seven million-dollar hospital, and I think at that point, it's probably not feasible. Um, with that said, I do very much believe that we need it. It's long overdue, but that's only part of the problem. We have more pressing concerns that I guarantee you, everyone in this room has encountered at some point. And we have a shortage of primary care physicians and specialists. And if they are even accepting new patients, you're looking at at least a six-month wait. Now, I don't know about you, but if you have, I'll, I'll take it from a personal experience with someone I know and love very much. They, they had a cyst in their sinuses that they thought was cancer. Could you imagine living with that stress and fear for six months and, and, and just sitting and waiting? Luckily, we had the option and the, uh, privilege to own a car and be able to have good health where we could drive across the bridge, because there are individuals here who I have actually encountered in the past few weeks, who cannot be, are not mobile enough to drive themselves across the bridge, and that their, uh, offspring are not in the immediate area, and they don't have ways to get across the bridge to access their healthcare. So these things are extremely important, and one thing I will see or have learned of recently as an, as an option afforded to us, um, i- is namely the health prevent, uh, looking to be designated under the Health Professional Shortage Area, which would open up state loan repayment programs, um, namely MLARP, which is Maryland Loan Assistant Rep-, Assistance Repayment Program for Physicians. This would essentially alleviate the burden that doctors have with repaying their loans. Another is the, a federal program, such as the National Health Service Corps, which also offers loan repayment and scholarships for health professionals to work in underserved communities. Additionally, there are tax incentives that we can look to utilize, as well as state and federal grants and subsidies that are all financial tools that we should look to be utilizing in one capacity or in a combination to attract as many physicians as possible. I do understand that it's a business, 'cause it is. The, it's a numbers game. The more people you see that you have coming through your door, that is more profit for the doctor. And that is the fact of the matter. Um, so being in a place where we do not have the population density as areas across the bridge do, from a business perspective, there is less incentive from, for a physician to want to live here unless they just love the area and don't mind making less money. Um, so th- those are all things that we should be considering and, and trying to address in the short term, because those are also problems that a new hospital is not going to solve. That will only bring a new building here, it will centralize their auxiliary branches, which is great and very smart strategic planning, but at the same time, that if everything goes to plan, is at least five years down the road. There are many people here who should not have to wait that long, and we have more pressing concerns in the short term.
Thank you. Kevin, I saw you nodding, and you must have reflected on this as well. Uh, if there's a family matter or a community matter, what are your thoughts on, uh, healthcare going forward?
Frank's point about having to go across the bridge all too often, we...
Just pull the microphone a little closer to you. There you go.
Sorry, I'm not used to something. Uh, but to Frank's point about going across the bridge, uh, all too often, we don't, we don't have the family care, we'll just start with the family care, that we're comfortable with, that we feel like understands us and really cares about us as an individual, and we're not just another dollar to them. Case in point, just my wife and I, we've been going across the bridge for twenty years, or sixteen years, as long as we've been, lived here. Uh, because we found a family practice that we were comfortable with and knows us and knows our healthcare. Now, there are some specialists over here that we've been able to get in with, um, again, but to Frank's point, it's, it's a waiting game. We, we have a severe shortage of specialists, uh, family practice as well, but mo-, a lot more specialists. And we do have the facilities to do the diagnostics, but again, we still need the specialists, we need the, the radiologist and the, huh, the neuro-, neurologist and the neurosurgeons, and not that we don't have a good one here, Dr. Kurt Tom, everybody probably knows him. Uh, we've utilized his services, but if you, you have a severe pulmonary issue, yes, we have a pulmonary, doctors here, but they can only do so much. I mean, they can't work twenty-four, seven. They have to have some relief sometime, somewhere. Uh, I understand we're a fairly small community, but we have a lot to offer here. We have a lot of great people here. There, it, I don't understand what is so difficult, but I'm gonna find out, about recruiting, as Frank was talking about, recruiting physicians and specialists to come over here. Is it just about money? It should not just be about money. Did you get into the profession because you cared about human beings? Or did you get into profession to make the big dollars?
Fair enough. Al, I know when we were here a few weeks, a couple, a few months ago, you had thoughts on how to accelerate this process for the hospital, and maybe we could pick that up. And, you know, what do you see the outlook being for a, a new hospital at this point?
Well, let me back up. Uh, the years I was in Nebraska, I sat for ten years on the Physician Recruitment Committee. And, uh, we, we had done a census on our doctors, and the average age was sixty-four. And what we did was, uh, we brought them in, we sat them down and said, you know, what's, what's your goal? How many more years do you wanna work? Do you wanna bring a partner in? Uh, do you wanna sell your practice? What do you wanna do? And from there, we ascertained what we needed, and we hired two recruiting firms to help us. Uh, we brought people in, we guaranteed salaries, we gave them some free office space for the first year, and over the course of two years, we brought thirteen new doctors to a community of, uh, twenty-one thousand people. I feel very strongly that when the University of Maryland, uh, came in and we sold our hospital to them, they made a pledge to us that they were gonna put together a good healthcare system. And, uh, Mike Silgin, who was on the chamber board in about two thousand and six, was brought in to help build a new hospital. So that's how long I've been involved in this. And, uh, at that time, they said, well, we have to go to Dorchester, and we have to do something with their hospital. And then we gotta go, uh, over to Queenstown and do something over there. And then we have to go to Denton, and we've gotta build them something. And then we have to go to Chestertown and figure out what we're gonna do with that hospital. And, uh, as you know, the Dorchester Hospital is gone, and they've built a new facility, they've built a new facility in Denton, they've built a couple of facilities over in Queen Anne's County. And to the, to my surprise, but also admiration, the community in Chestertown rose up and said, we're not gonna let you close our hospital. We're gonna fight to keep that open. And so they were able to work and, with the feds, and create a model for a new re-, small regional hospital. And they're in the system. What I don't see in our community is our community leaders getting up and, and making noise and marshaling the forces of our community to say, look, you've been telling us long enough you're gonna build us a new regional medical center. Now, what do we need? We need fifty million dollars to be raised from the five counties. There are people who are working on that. We needed a hundred million dollars from the state. Unfortunately, uh, Governor Hogan, what he did was, uh, was really nice, but what didn't mean anything, because he was walking out, and he said, well, you know, I recommend that the next administration do that. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody lobbying hard enough for us. And so we got, uh, I think it was ten million dollars from the legislature, because this year, the legislature was able to put money in the budget. And they're promising us twenty million. But it's a five-hundred-million-dollar hospital. And, you know, as a council, we got an annual report from the hospital, from Mr. Cozel, and I'm not blaming him. All I'm saying is, I know the mayor met every month with him, but we never got a report. We never heard what was going on. I think we need to be engaged with them, just like the county is engaged with them, on an ongoing basis, on a weekly basis, to ask the question, what's going on? Uh, we should be up in Annapolis, banging on the governor's door, and banging on the University of Maryland's door in Baltimore, saying, this is not acceptable. Our community and our region deserve better service. The other thing that nobody talks about is federal reimbursement. Doctors on the shore get ten percent less than those on the western shore. This is something we need to talk to our senators and our congressmen about. And, and we haven't done that. Uh, in the past, I've had the opportunity to go up to Annapolis and lobby when doctors help, uh, their insurance premiums were going up so much they could hardly afford them. And the other thing that's happened is most physicians now have become, uh, have sold themselves to the university system, because it's so expensive to run an office. And the university is hiring people for three-year contracts, and unfortunately, we're losing them at the end of three years. And we need to know why, and we need to know what we can do as a community to better serve those individuals who are coming in here to serve us.
Bob, you know, you, well said. Bob, you've lived with this. You may have more insight than anybody, 'cause you've been through this. And I, I'm not, I don't wanna put you on the defensive, but I'd, I'd like for your perspective on this and where you think it might be going.
Well, correction. There were reports of, from the hospital meetings with the town, passed out to the town council every month that we had the meetings. Uh, without a doubt, they, they all got them. And the last thing I heard from Ken Cozel was, uh, when they decide to go ahead with the building of the new hospital, that they would have a committee get together to figure out what to do with the vacant building that we were gonna have. And some of the suggestions that came up were, uh, a VA clinic, so that the veterans, which we have a rather sizable community in Easton, they were having to go to Cambridge or Wilmington or Perry Point, someplace like that. Also, we do have veterans' offices that are in several locations throughout Easton, so we could combine them under one roof. We have a large number of, of walking people in the town of Easton, so they could not walk out to Hog Neck for the hospital center, so leave a, a clinic, a walk-in clinic in the existing building. And it could also be used for a business incubator and work sharing process. So there have been a lot of things done, and, uh, the letter that was sent to the governor's office a year or so ago did get a favorable response. Uh, whatever you're talking about something this big, this involved, and this time-consuming, you're gonna get a lot of false information to start with. And it's, it's not meant to lead anybody down the wrong path, but it's, it's just information that changes almost as soon as it's said. So just be aware that, that there was information passed around.
Fair enough. Let me stay with you on, but change topics. You know, the, I certainly enjoy this community because you feel safe, and yet, we're not a community that's without some crime.
Right.
And we probably have, but I'm interested in your perspective, some of the same challenges of hiring doctors as getting good law enforcement people, although I think we have good law enforcement people. But how do you see, um, sort of, again, going forward the next three or four years, um, sort of public safety and crime in the, in the community? Are we gonna be able to manage it? Is it growing? Is, is the drug issue gonna get larger, or do you think it's under control?
Well, there's several things that, that we have going on right now with the, with the emergency services. One is, uh, that we keep certified officers on the staff. Uh, once they are certified by the Maryland Commission, they can pretty much, uh, put themselves in any county, any town, county in the state. Uh, they can work anywhere, wherever the benefits are better, wherever the pay's better, if they choose to do so. Uh, the fire departments, uh, we've been blocked a couple of times on the training grounds that we'd like to have. We do have a sizable number of young people that, uh, juniors and seniors in high school that are joining up with fire department. They can't drive trucks and what have you, but they can ride, and they can learn if they... ins and outs of firefighting. We do need the teaching facilities. And the teaching facilities are not only for the fire department, but it's the paramedics and the police departments can also use them. So we do have programs underway. We've given extra raises and increases to our police officers. We're talking now about take-home cars. We've increased their pension possibilities, also their pension payouts. So we've done just about everything we can do right now. It's a small town, but we need to look at it closer and possibly do something better. As far as crime goes, I'll flip a coin and pick a number, but I think right now, we're doing very well compared to other towns. There's very few serious crimes that go on in the town of Easton where they don't have a suspect identified in a very short period of time. And that person is picked up. Of course, you'd like to do the prevention, not necessarily the capture after the deed is done. But you don't see seven, I don't even want to say it, because then things start to happen to you, and they said, well, you said it was going to happen. But you don't see what's happening in other towns as far as the mass shootings and so forth, and we don't want them. And I think the police do a real good job of kind of their ears to the ground. They know what's going on in the town. They know pretty much who's doing it. I saw a picture at the sheriff's office a few months ago that had some gang bangers that were meeting and doing some things. And they identified everybody just from holding the picture up and the officers in the room. So it's still a small town, and you still have to be on your guard. But they do a very good job, and they do it very well, and they do it tirelessly.
Thanks. I want each of you to touch on this, and then we will take a few questions from the podium over here. But Al?
A few years ago, we came to learn that the pension plan that the town of Easton had was independent of the state pension plan. And the state pension plan was much more robust. It had a drop program. It had a cost of living index. And our pension plan only had 1%, cost of living index over the course of time. And that was not acceptable. We also weren't doing take-home cars. And we were training officers, and they were leaving us with about three and a half, four years, going to places like Centerville, which was on the state plan for pension, had take-home cars. And so we talked with the mayor about checking out with the state to see how we could get on the state pension plan. It took them about a year to do the actuarial work. And when they came back to us, and I sat in on the meeting, the answer was, we're about six years too late because the federal government had changed the rules, and we weren't able to take all of the money we had in our pension fund and move that over to the state system. And because the state folks retire at 25 years and we retire at 22 years, there was a difference there. Also, we would have to run two pension systems. All the new people could get on the state, but the people who were vested already had a state. So that's a real challenge. And I know the mayor was talking with the governor, excuse me, the police chief, about trying to find a way that we could put some new programs into place that would help bump that pension up. Now, I left the council on May 15. When I left on May 15, we still hadn't seen anything yet. It was just a discussion point. The other issue which is important to me is that the trend now is not to buy cars, but to lease cars. And you lease them for five years. And you don't put out $90,000 a car or $80,000 a car, but you put a lot less capital out, and you're able to be able to use that capital for other things. And that's something that I think we need to, instead of buying cars, we need to adjust to that. Will save us a lot of money. And who knows what a car is going to look like in five years? So those are some of the things. I live on Rails to Trails for the last 18 years. I've called the police three weeks in a row for people who are sitting on a bench by us drinking beer. We're seeing more and more of that kind of activity. And to the police's credit, they are now starting to patrol Rails to Trails much more than they have in the past, and even to the point of getting out of their vehicles and walking. I think we've got a good police chief. I think we've got a good police department. They're a little undermanned. We still have room for some new officers. And we have a lot of officers who are eligible to retire, and being able to find quality people is going to be a challenge.
Thanks. Frank, I know you talked about making sure this community is safe for families. Do you think we're there? How do you feel about it?
Yeah, I would say that Easton is a safe place to live and that you can walk around at any time of day or night and feel fine walking around. I think that that's great. And to me, that does tie into smart growth. We need to make sure that as we build more housing or infill or things of that nature, that we also make sure that our first responders in our police department also grow accordingly to make sure that the ratio between officers and citizens remains proportionate. In support for first responders, I believe that we need to prioritize their needs, essentially to ensure, one example is to ensure that the training facility for the fire department at Mistletoe is fully equipped and functional. In a nation where police applications have dipped to historic lows, Easton has not been immune to this challenge. To ensure our community's safety and security, it is crucial that we attract and retain the very best in law enforcement. As Easton Council President, I commit to working with the Chief of Police to enhance EPD's benefit package. And by doing so, we not only show appreciation for our officers' unwavering dedication, but also establish EPD as a more desirable and esteemed department for potential recruits. Now, with the new cars and the benefits package that they have mentioned previously, these are all things that are a step in the right direction. And we do also need to consider the fact of finding ways to attract officers laterally instead of recruiting new ones. Because if we attract laterally from other departments, the time and money that gets that officer on the street and patrol is significantly shorter, I mean, weeks, like, I believe eight to 12 weeks, as opposed to a year to two years for training or to recruit out of the academy. So making sure that when we do enhance the benefit package, that that is something that we do prioritize to be most cost-effective and intelligent with our efforts.
Thank you. Kevin, I find myself, I find myself thinking about your opening comment about everybody counts, and sometimes crime affects those the most who can least afford it, that is sometimes hidden in our community. And I just wondered, as you think about this issue, are we helping, you know, sort of evenly across the community deal with crime and safety issues in your mind?
First of all, I think, again, I want to echo everybody what we say. We have a fine police department. We've had to utilize them before in the past, and the response time is incredible. And you immediately feel safe. Yes, most of us have an alarm on our house. A lot of us have dogs, early warning systems. That doesn't compare to having enough officers on the street. Now, and I understand the financial implications of how many officers, the equipment, they need, I mean, just a ballistic vest today to get a good one is, could be upwards of And to your question, I think our department is doing the best they can with the resources they have at their disposal to fair and equitably police the communities. I think there's some communities that may feel that they're overpoliced, and that, I think, could be addressed by more community involvement and more community, in the community involvement with the police department, to have outreach programs for those communities to get them to understand that they matter as much as any other community in this town. It's a huge challenge. And as we've mentioned, we see that nationwide. The recruitment issue is systemic all over the country. The numbers have dropped for whatever reason. We don't need to get into all the, everybody knows the different reasons. But with good communication and good outreach, just sticking your hand out, going, walking the community and talking to the people, listen to what they have to tell you. I think working with the police department, knowing what the community sees or hears or feels, could make a difference.
Thanks. Very thoughtful. We have just a few minutes left. We're happy to entertain some questions from the audience. If you wish to step to the podium. We only have a couple of rules, and that is that the fine people up here get to answer the questions, and the people, the person at the podium gets to ask. You might have one. Nope. Oh, there we, Mr. Lesher.
Thank you all for stepping up, for doing this. And I know what it feels like. One of the town's greatest assets, most valuable assets, is Eastern Utilities. The town owns that. Electric, gas, water, sewer, cable, internet, IT services. It can be tempting to look at Eastern Utilities cash reserves. There are certainly entities out there that would love to purchase Eastern Utilities, but Eastern Utilities unquestionably contributes to both affordability in this town and quality of life. How do you view Eastern Utilities, and what will you do to ensure that it continues to thrive and serve the people of Easton?
Bob, do you want to lead off?
I think we have a couple of items that I would consider valuable assets. One, because I am closely associated with them, is the Eastern Fire Department. If you don't know, there's probably 17, 17 or 18 pieces of equipment. Only three are owned by the town. The other 15 are owned by the volunteers. The town owns the real estate, and the fire department uses it and has the benefit of it. Eastern Utilities, I've said it before, when we go after a business to bring into Easton, or we do something that we'd like to have in Easton and we really want it, and it's very competitively bid, if we go in as a team with Eastern Utilities, we stand a good chance of winning. I don't ever remember anything that people have said they'd like to have that somebody at Eastern Utilities could take a couple pieces of wire and a nail or something like that and make it work. They're excellent, and they have a great reputation in the country. But to me, the valuable assets are the people that we've got working. Right now, it's about 150 for the town and a like number for the Eastern Utilities. But the people that we have, it's the best workforce that we've ever had as a whole, and I'd put them up against anybody.
Thanks. And Al, maybe you could spend a minute on the sort of the relationship between Eastern Utilities and the town.
Well, to answer Mr. Lesher's question, I would never consider trying to sell or break up Eastern Utilities. I think that would be the worst thing the town and Eastern Utilities could do. You know, I was, one time I said, you know, the town owns Eastern Utilities, and somebody reminded me, well, that got everybody nervous at Eastern Utilities. And I didn't mean it in a way to get them nervous. I look at their operation and how the professionalism that I see in their operation, and I think some of that could be adapted into the town. When you walk in their office, it's a very professional office. It looks good. It's sharp, and the people are well-trained. Now, we have a lot of well-trained people at Town Hall, but I mean to tell you that it would be nice if everybody kind of had a shirt that matched and things were done a little bit differently. And if you look at Town Hall, that's a pretty antiquated place. And I think there's an opportunity to work with Eastern Utilities, maybe to build another building adjacent to them where we could have a joint Town Hall and an Eastern Utilities facility. And we could better utilize both facilities to the benefit of our citizens. And I think that's the kind of thing we should be looking at in the future. I have had nothing but accolades from the public about Eastern Utilities. And I know there are people who beat on me periodically and say, you know, we should sell that. Well, the answer is no. They contribute towards the town. They're the guys who put the lights up during Christmas. They do a lot of different things that you don't think they do. And we have a great relationship between our staffs, and we want to keep it that way.
Thanks. Frank?
Yes?
Care to comment on the Eastern Utilities? You don't have to.
I mean, it's a great partnership with the town, and the rates that they offer are lower than other municipalities in the area. So I do believe that even when sometimes people may feel that their bill is high, even with the raises that did occur during COVID because they were offsetting their costs from customers who weren't paying, it still is less than what we are seeing in other areas around town. So, yeah, I think that that is a great relationship, and we should look to continue to foster it and have that be a shining part of our town government.
Thanks. Kevin, any thoughts you'd like to share?
I love Eastern Utilities.
Well said.
I've never, no, no community have, my wife and I lived in, where you have all your utilities under one roof and you get one bill every month. The service, I can only speak for us, I would imagine it's the same for all of you, the service, oh my, it's beyond superior. Not too long, real quick, a personal, we had a transformer blew out. You know, if that had been VG, we might be waiting three, four days before they got it fixed. They had it fixed within two and a half hours. We had our power back on. I didn't miss but a couple hours of work. Eastern Utilities can do no wrong in my book, and we should do everything we can to support them and keep the partnership going.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? We've got a couple of minutes left. Yes, sir. Step up to the microphone if you would.
Yes, this year, we implemented a plastic bag ban here in Easton. I'd like to understand, as our council president, do you think that was a step too far? Or would you welcome some additional bans on plastic straws, takeout containers, et cetera?
And we're going to make this the lightning round because I've just got a couple of minutes left before we go to our closing statements. Really, I'd invite anybody to comment if you wish to comment on the plastic ban.
I think the plastic ban was a good first step. I think we also created legislation with that ban that made sense. I would, I would look at any proposal and consider it and get public input before moving forward.
Well, let's do this. We're closing in on...
I think that we've got two more questions. I've got one online.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you standing there. Just go ahead.
Hi, I'm here. On behalf of somebody who's watching on YouTube right now, and we've had great engagement both across Facebook and YouTube, so thank you for those who are listening online. I'm sure I'm going to butcher this person's last name, but we have a Mr. Pettis online right now, and he says, "One of the major ways to achieve the things that are needed in any society is to get the citizens to work together. Do you think that there are things that you can do to get us all to work together?" Do you think that there are things that you can do to get us all to work together more effectively?"
Yes, I believe that engaging with the citizenry, allowing them to give more input than has been offered or made available by previous administrations would be a great first step, to look to work as a team and not to be someone who looks to persuade and manipulate people into seeing your will, as mentioned by one of my colleagues in their Talbot Spy interview, and that is not the way to approach other people. And to make sure that there are plenty of avenues for people to become engaged and to be made aware of the town council meetings in advance, yes, a, a social media post that they do is nice and is a great first step, but I think, I think that we can do more there to increase transparency, increase engagement, and to be letting people know what the agenda items are, not just that there is a meeting, and that people who are wanting to be able to participate know enough in advance what is actually on the agenda and what is going to be discussed more than a few hours than earlier in the day, so that they can plan accordingly in case they have to take off work. So that would be a great first step into making sure that we foster a, a positive environment that we have with our town citizenry. Thank you.
I know Al, Al started, go ahead.
Well, I suggested this when I ran for mayor, and I suggest this again, we don't, we shouldn't have meetings at 12 noon, at 1 o'clock, at 9 o'clock in the morning. We should be moving those meetings to the evening so the public can get engaged, and that's a first step. And also, better information, getting people information ahead of time, and making sure that they can be engaged both at meetings, and recently, there was a BOZA meeting with a developer, and there were people who took time off from work, and the chairman of that commission decided not to let those individuals who were going to be affected by the project have a chance to talk, and instead threw it back to the planning commission. To me, that was irresponsible, and I think we need to be more conscious of people's times, their energy, and, and their talents. Thank you.
Bob?
I also think that, that this town and this county don't work without volunteers. We have thousands of them in the town of Easton, maybe some of them in multi-different, multi-roles, but when you look around at the number of people that are doing things that make this town just a little bit better place to live, the, the Little League coaches, the firemen, the Waterfowl Festival, the Academy of the Art, all of the people that do things that make us just a little bit better than the guy next door, I think we need to keep those people involved, we need to keep them informed of what's going on, and we need to work very well to keep them happy and moving forward.
Thanks. Anybody else with a question? One more.
So, this is a truncated term. You basically all will be, whoever's the elected will be serving one-third of their annual, you know, term. What for each candidate is near and dear to you to achieve in the 18 months of the term that you guys will have, and why?
Well, it'll be a 20-month term because we, we've let four months go by since the last election and putting a mayor in office. The hospital is a number-one hospital, hospital, working on putting a plan together for workforce housing would be the two issues in that timeframe. And also, the review of all the resolutions that we have on the books. I know I was, I did a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act request recently, and the response to it was to send me a 1976 resolution that was no longer germane, and I think we need to start going back through and checking the different resolutions we have and making sure they're up to date.
Kevin, we want to go, let's go to the, work, work back this way. Top priority in the 20 months.
Complete projects that have been outstanding for years. Case in point, there's a severe drainage issue on Glenwood Avenue, there's people's yards that are falling into the ditch, they've been postponed over and over again for numerous reasons, not from the town lack of trying, it's not just the town, it's contractors, it's this, it's that. The hospital, of course, we've already mentioned that, there's, and there's other communities in our town that have been, I don't want to, they haven't been neglected, they just haven't had the attention that they should have had.
Thanks. Frank?
Well, a, as I went in length earlier, for better health care is to address the short-term concerns regarding the lack of primary care physicians and specialists in the area. That is something that we can work to accomplish faster than, than the hospital, while we should not neglect our obligation to ensure that we do get a new hospital, that is not really a short-term resolution in my mind. And also, I would say that, you know, we need to make sure that we are representing everyone fairly, even the forgotten citizens, the ones who have pasts and who have made mistakes and who are looked down upon by many people of our society. Those people have voices too, and they deserve to be represented as such, and they also deserve housing opportunities and not be told that they have to move to Cambridge because they can't afford to live here.
Thank you. Bob?
I, I think Al hit it on the head when he started talking about the, the affordable health care and the hospital, but I also think a, a big part of, of the problem we're facing today is we've let the comprehensive plan drag, and we haven't gotten that passed. If that was in, in place, and we had our zoning rules up to date, if we had our needs for housing up to date, if we had the annexation requests up to date, and what we were going to need for public facilities, we wouldn't have had the fights that we were having over Poplar Hill and Maryland Health Club. I, I remember Maryland Health Club came in and wanted to know what they had to do to get started with their project, and we told them, I said, you know, if you're going to change what's already a rule and in place, you better be talking to the neighbors. And I would bet you right now, if we go and talk to the neighbors, that none of them have been talked to by Maryland Health Club. So people don't, don't do what we're telling them to do, and for some reason, we don't have the, the oomph back to back us up and get this stuff going. But I really think that a comprehensive plan has got to move forward, and it's got to be put in place.
This question kind of got us going, but let's, let's do our final round, give each of you two minutes. I'm going to start with Kevin, since I started with Bob on the first round. This is really to touch on any area that we didn't get to, or amplify any area that you'd like to amplify. Each have two minutes. Kevin?
Our community is very diverse. We need to bring our community together, because we cannot be successful if we all do not have a voice and exercise that voice. Don't be afraid to exercise your voice. You have a right to an opinion. We need to find ways to bring everyone together from all walks of life to make our community, our town, the best place to live. We need to make sure that we keep responsible common sense development. We all know we have a housing issue. We need to address it in a common sense, responsible way. I may not speak as eloquently as Al, or the mayor, or even Frank, but I'm a- I'm a passionate individual, and I consider the adventure that I'm on right now a mission, just like when I was in the Army. And the primary goal of that mission is to accomplish it. I don't care how many hands I have to shake, how many doors I have to knock on, if it means that our town could be the best place for everyone, I'm willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
I'm good, Frank.
I'd like to thank everyone for your time tonight to hear us out and to learn our visions for the town. I'd also like to thank Bob Willie for his longstanding service to the town, and also for teaching my dad how to play football in middle school. Also, thank you, Al, for your service, and Kevin as well. They all have wonderful experience to offer this town, but I bring something different. I have a unique perspective and experience that cannot be bought. I was thrust into a war zone last year when my family was affected by the invasion of Ukraine. I thrived in a high-stress situation, and I was able to move mountains to, that's my daughter. She's a product of this statement, and that, I was able to, with the help of charities here and many residents in Easton with their outpouring of support and love for people in need, I was able to procure food, ambulances, electric generators, supplies for refugee camps, and our efforts as a town, if many of you are not aware, we have helped over 30,000 people who fled Mariupol to Zaporizhzhya, where they have the nuclear power plants that they're fighting over. So if you contributed to Easton Rotary Club, or the Youth and Community Foundation of it, or Disaster Aid USA, know that you touched that many lives, and I helped make that possible through my steadfast persistence and ability to connect dots and get in with power brokers swiftly, and to be tactful in my efforts, just know that I am able to bring that dedication and that steadfast persistence here to this town to make sure that we are able to accomplish our goals, and all the things that everyone's spoken about, I had the most energy and the most persistence to do that. So just know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Al?
We're talking about a 20-month timeframe, not a four-year term, and for 20 months, it, there's a learning curve when you first get on the council, and I've got eight years of that learning curve, and I can jump in, and I can be proactive, and I know all the council members, and I can work with all the council members, and I can work with the mayor. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm the best candidate for the next 20 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Bob, we're going to give you the last word.
Last, but, okay. For the last hour or so, you, you've heard about all the good things going on in Easton, even the bad things, we've, we've kind of glossed over and think they're going to get better. But a lot of things we, we haven't had a chance to talk about, the affordable housing, for instance, I still don't think we're going to solve the problem by building individual houses for everybody, it just doesn't work. So we've got to come up with something unique, an old factory with a, a new scheme for putting apartments in it, whatever it might be. But I, I think that's the kind of energy right now that's simmering in Easton, and if we can get it moving, we're, we're going to be a great town, even greater than we are now, we're going to be very, very, very good. And contrary to what my opponent on the right said, the best candidate for this upcoming election is me. I've had six years in the office, and we've, we've managed very well, we're still in business, we've still got money in the bank, so I think we're going to do real well in the future. But if anybody asks you, it's a vote for Bob Willie, it's a vote for good leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Frank? Real quick, I just want to thank my wonderful wife of 30 years. Without her support, I wouldn't have the courage to be here. My wife Debbie.
Very nice.
I love you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to the end of the evening, I want to thank the-
Craig, Craig, the mayor's talked about his wife.
Frank's talked about his wife. Kevin's talked about his wife. My wife Karen, who I've been married to for 53 years this year, and I want to thank her, and I'll be quiet.
And I want to thank Diane.
Or else I couldn't go home.
I want to thank Diane for being here, I'll be in big trouble. Listen, thank you to the Avalon Foundation, to the Talbot Spy for sponsoring this, thank you to the many people who are watching this program now online and will watch it, hundreds and hundreds more in the, in the next few days, but most of all, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and being here in the Avalon Theater to participate in this event, and I would ask one thing of you, and that is to give these four gentlemen your thanks for what they're doing, for standing up and for fighting for Easton. Thank you very much.
Remember to vote for Frank Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you very much.